Hi Val, yes, yes I can.
Okay.
Thank you everyone.
If you can help me with this public hearing and how to start it?
Val, all you need to do is just go through and announce it off the agenda. It's... Let me... Because you have it listed.
As number one on the agenda item.
Yes, are we, did we, did the meeting already commence?
Yes, and I started the live as well.
Okay, but I mean, did we do, did we do, did we do a call to order? Invocation, moment of silence, quorum check?
Not yet, sir.
Yes, what we need to do now is just go ahead and do a normal meeting. And then when it comes to the, uh... To the item, uh, then, then you just read off the item and, and, you know, that's when the public hearing will start.
Okay, I just want to say it again, I'm going to be recording this video, um, just to get it on the live Facebook and I'm recording it as well. Mayor, if you want to begin, and then we'll go with the public hearing.
Hold on, Val, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
I can't hear anything.
Sean, would you like to start off with the duly called or does it have to be Mayor? I think Mayor is having difficulties on his microphone and, um, he can't hear me.
Well, I recommend we wait for Mayor.
Okay.
So let's just give him a few minutes. I don't know if you want to call him on, on his cell? And see if he'll take-
I can hear you.
Okay.
Val, before, uh, when you get to the item on the public hearing, like I said, just read it off, it'll be obviously subpart, item one.
Okay.
Read it off and then you, after that, if you can go ahead and read, uh, what, you know, the, the notice of public hearing that you have on screen.
Okay.
After you announce it, after you announce the agenda item, just, just read that, uh, and then, you know, the item will move forward from there.
Okay, okay. So Mayor, you can begin to do the, uh, quorum check and everything, and then we'll go with number one for the public hearing.
Alright, is everybody ready?
Yes.
Okay, uh, this is a duly called regular council meeting of the town of Anthony, Texas, according to section 551 dot 002 and 551 dot 041 of the open meetings act of the Texas government code. Public participation during the portion of the agenda for public comment is limited to that portion only, except that if a citizen's comments relate to a topic or subject covered under an agenda item, the citizen shall wait to speak until the agenda item comes up for discussion. At all other times during council meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the presiding officer. Um, Ms. Valerie Armandades, can we go ahead and do a quorum check, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor Proten Weeks.
Here.
Councilman Garcia? Okay, I got away from Mr. Garcia, is that okay, Henry? Mr. Garcia, can you go on mute so you can say here? Okay, can I get, uh, Councilman Alfaro?
Here.
Uh, Councilman Chavez?
Here.
Uh, Mayor Romero?
Here.
Okay, and, um, Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Okay, perfect, we have a quorum.
Alright. Going on to, uh, quorum, uh, open forum for the public, limited to two minutes. Ms. Armandades, do we have anybody signed up or that has contacted you about open forum?
Uh, not for the open forum, sir, just for particular agenda items.
Okay, let the record reflect, we have nobody signed on for, uh, open forum. Moving on to item five, which is going to be discussion and action on the following new business. Item one, public hearing on a variance request submitted by Casas de Amantina LLC to allow a 15-foot street-side setback and a five-foot side setback as part of the construction of a proposed residence at 401 Seventh Street. Mr. Palomares?
I'm going to read the notice of public hearing. Town of Anthony, Texas, public notice is given that a public hearing will be held on June 8th, 2020 at 6:30 PM during the regular meeting of the town council of the town of Anthony, Texas, at the town council table, chambers, uh, 401 Walker Drive, Anthony, Texas, 79821, to solicit comments on Casas de Amantina LLC proposed request for reduced setbacks consisting of a 15-foot street-side setback and a five-foot side setback as part of the construction of a proposed residence at 401 Seventh Street. Anthony, Texas, 79821, identified as parcel number 245855 and more particularly legally described as Lot 1, Block 5, Melton, addition to Latuna, El Paso County, Texas, according to the plat thereof on file in volume 14, page 31A, real property records, El Paso County, Texas. Uh, we also had attached on the letters that we provided to the residents, um, and exhibit that more particularly identifies the property. Um, a variance to allow a 15-foot street-side setback and a five-foot side setback is being requested by Casas de Amantina LLC from the town council of the town of Anthony, Texas for proposed development. All persons interested are invited to attend a public hearing and be heard. Written comments can be submitted to. On this case, I had initially posted on the website for them to contact me via email due to our circumstances.
Mayor, council members, um, Valerie, did, did you get any written comments from anyone?
No, sir, just questions, uh, what the letter was for. I just explained that, you know, if they had any comments, um, they can come in, but no, after I explained to them what the letter was, they didn't want to, they didn't have any further questions once I explained what this was, but no, sir.
So no, no written comments were submitted?
No, no.
Do we have anybody from Casas de Amantina LLC, uh, here to represent, uh, you know, to discuss their, uh, their setback?
Yes, sir, I have Mr. Alderete, um, on the, on here, on video. Mr. Alderete, would you like to, to say something? I have you on mute, sir, so if you can unmute yourself.
Yes, my name is Dan Alderete and I, and I concur with the public notice and one, and the message I'm requesting.
Any questions, uh, any other comment?
And like I mentioned?
Did Ron, did Ron already took a look at it and everything, Ben?
Yes, sir. Uh, it would have been good to have Ron on the line, um, but everything moved forward with him checking and, uh, he's in agreement.
Mayor, council members, Valerie, do we have anybody, any other public member uh, here on, at the meeting that is here to say something related to this variance request?
No, sir, I had posted on Friday, if anybody wanted to be on this meeting to contact me beforehand by email or at the town hall, nobody contacted me, so I can have them on here. So, no, and not even last minute, nobody had contacted me to, to have any comments on the meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted that on the record, thank you.
Alright, interesting, Al, Henry, for the public hearing, uh, give it a little more time or...
Mayor, well, if there's nobody, uh, from the public that will, wanting to comment, uh, so Alderete is here, he made a statement, so I think, uh, we can move forward to the next item agenda, we can close the public hearing.
Okay, uh, let the record reflect that we're moving forward with closing, uh, the public hearing at 6:45. Moving on to item two, discussion, consideration and action on a variance request submitted by Casas de Montina LLC to allow a 15-foot street-side setback and a five-foot side setback as part of the construction of a proposed residence at 401 Seventh Street. Any questions, any comment from council? We have no comment, uh, from council, can I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and stick it.
I have a motion made by Councilman Chavez, Secretary of State, Councilman Garcia, to, uh, allow the variance request submitted by Casas de Mancha LLC to allow that 15-foot side, street-side setback and five-foot side setback as part of the construction of that residential home, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, I'm going to abstain though, Ben.
Okay, uh, I have three, four, and one, uh, Mr. Sean Leach, who's on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Three to zero. So item number three, discussion, consideration and action on agreement to not assess sewer fees on separate water meter for dedicated water line for water filtration and bottling process by and between Town of Anthony, Texas and Mountain Desert Water Company LLC, DBA, Water King. Um, as you know, uh, I'll let Henry, uh, take over in just a second. As you know, guys, uh, from the last or previous council, when we were discussing the, uh, item and the sewer rates, uh, for Water King, considering, uh, majority of the portion of water that they have been metered is going into the, uh, bottling and distribution. Uh, we had, uh, them ideally look, um, and we offered, you know, that the best or solution to that problem would be that they install a separate, uh, water meter. And, uh, after pretty much everything was said and done, we did get both legal, uh, involved for the town of Anthony and for Water King, and they put together this, uh, agreement, um, for the town, uh, just so we can have it on the record that we will not be, um, assessing a sewer fee to that water line that is going to be specifically used for bottling, uh, water and the distribution there at the Water King. Mr. Palomares?
Mayor, uh, council members, uh, Mayor, before we move to this item or, uh, discuss a few things on this item, I know, I don't know if Mr. Alderete is still in the meeting, I don't know, you know, obviously, his, I, his agenda item has been addressed, uh, obviously, he's welcome to stay throughout the rest of the meeting, uh, but, uh, I wanted to thank him for, you know, going through the process. Uh, you know, I don't know if you want to address that with him, uh, but he's obviously welcome to stay throughout the rest of the meeting.
He has left the meeting, sir.
Okay, thank you, Val. Uh, Mayor, on this, on this item, um, I put a little background, if you all got your caps and on there, there's a, a background and, and, uh, where, how we got to where we're at today on this agenda item, I just want to cover that really briefly. Uh, if you all just bear with me, I know a lot of you, if, if not all of you have, I've already read it, uh, but just for the record, uh, Mr. Angel Rodriguez, who is with Mountain Desert Water Company LLC doing business as Water King, uh, he reached out to the mayor and town staff, uh, to share Water King's concerns with the town's, uh, current sewer rate structure, which, as you all are all aware, it's based on water consumption that is presumed to be discharged into the town's sewer system. Mr. Rodriguez communicated that, uh, under this current system, the town, the town's current sewer rate structure, uh, Water King was being assessed sewer charges based in large part on water consumption that wasn't, it, wasn't, uh, making its way into the municipal sewer system, but rather was, uh, was being filtered and ended up being in bottled form. So, uh, Mr. Rodriguez, on behalf of Water King, uh, shared these concerns with the mayor, uh, with town staff, and, uh, obviously, his belief that this would, is, and, is unfair to Water King. Uh, thereafter, the mayor in town, uh, shared with Mr. Rodriguez that since Water King's entire facility and operations are served by one meter, there is no reasonably feasible method to separately account for water consumption related to its non-water filtration and bottling segment of operations and water consumption that's related to the, uh, water filtration and bottling segment of operations. So in an effort to accommodate Water King's concerns and in the spirit of, of the fair application of its, of the town sewer rate structure, the mayor proposed a solution to, uh, Mr. Rodriguez of Water King. Of course, subject, of course, to, to you all's approval. Um, but he proposed, the mayor proposed, uh, doing a, having a dedicated water line for the water filtration and bottling segment of operations that could be separately metered. This would give the town the, obviously, the, the, the method of, of being able to, to account for that water that is in making its way into the municipal sewer system. And at the same time, you know, the proper application of the sewer rates would apply to the non-water filtration and bottling segment of operations. So effectively, what would happen here is Water King would have two meters, one meter that would be serving its non-water filtration and bottling segment of operations and, and, you know, its facility, uh, its offices there, and then another meter that is be, serving its water filtration and bottling segment of operations that doesn't, is not tied into the municipal sewer system. Um, the water meter, um, that's, that would be serving the non-water filtration and bottling segment of operations would continue as before, uh, being assessed sewer, uh, charges under the current sewer rate structure. As to the water meter that would be serving the water filtration and bottling segment of operations, the town would not assess sewer charges since, as I, as I mentioned earlier, the, there wouldn't be, the water consumption there ends up in, in a bottled form and not in the municipal sewer system. Um, part of the agreement with Water King, if you all would approve the agreement, would require that Water King, obviously, install a dedicated line for its water, uh, filtration and bottling operations, uh, segment of operations. And in doing, in making that capital investment, part of that capital investment required that they'd pay, they'd pay for the, the new meter, which is included as part of the tap fee. They would have to pay the tap fee to, for, for the installation of the second water meter. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez had communicated that Water King was amenable. I had some discussions with Mr. Rodriguez and, and who indicated that Water King was, was amenable to this type of, of arrangement. However, Water King wanted something in writing before they, it actually made a capital, it's the capital investment necessary to, to, uh, establish the second dedicated line and second meter. Uh, the mayor had instructed me to draft an agreement, and that's the agreement that's part of your packet. Uh, the agreement pretty much lays out what I indicated. It also, um, grants the town, um, assuming, uh, Water King is, is in agreement with this agreement, it grants the town an ability to be able to, to access Water King's records to make sure that, and access, uh, Water King's facility to make sure that that dedicated line isn't being tapped into, to, to address non, uh, filtration, wa, uh, bottling segments of operation. Uh, so, and of course, they'd have to get their, the necessary permits and licenses from the necessary agencies to, to establish that water line, that dedicated water line. And, you know, they would hold the town har, uh, harmless uh, from any liability associated with that dedicated water line. In a nutshell, that's what the agreement says, if, there's a few other specifics there, but, you know, I'll be more than happy to discuss, uh, anything related to that agreement. And I know Mr. Rodriguez is here, uh, in the meeting, if he wants to say anything, um, you know, you know, he can make a statement if he wishes. Mayor, that, that's it, that's all I have.
Mr. Rodriguez, do you have a statement, anything that you would like to add, sir?
Yes, sir, um, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Alright, good afternoon. Um, I guess the only thing that I kind of want to make sure that we're on the same page is, um, is there a way, or are you guys wanting to do a walkthrough prior, before the investment is made on part of Water King? Or do you guys want to do, or you guys thinking of doing the walkthrough after? Reason is, is I just need to, because of the new, because of the situation at hand, the Department of Health and the, uh, State of Texas have changed some things. So I need to make sure that we are all liable to go in there, since I, I only have written up two guys that are back there bottling because of the situation going on. Um, is that what you guys, I just want to know what you guys think about doing about that? Is it like, do you guys want to go beforehand, show you guys what we're trying to do? Or do you guys want to go afterhand when we do this?
That's a very good question, Mr. Rodriguez. On that, in regards to the standards codes and getting a hold of, uh, what public health and all that are looking at, ideally, we're going to have, uh, Everett Hakes, who's our main superintendent for water, and also Ron, uh, who's our building inspector, that are probably going to get with you and coordinate, um, that either walk through before or after, um, but I think at this point, it, it's best, uh, that you get that going with them. Ideally, we just want to make sure that we support whatever best practice, um, and the way, uh, it should be set up, uh, gets followed. So I'm sure Ron and Everett will be able to give us more insight, um, on, on that, on that matter. Most definitely.
Okay, that sounds fine to me, uh, you guys just tell me how, is it, you want me to proceed? I mean, I guess, the best thing for me is to, and, and obviously, as we're looking over, I'm looking over the company as you guys are looking over the town, is before we get this signed, would it be possible to set up that meeting to go ahead and get that squared away and they're okay with the way we're going to be doing this plumbing and how we're going to readjust all of this? Before we sign the agreement like that, if there's any changes that they want to, say they want to add or recommend, then we could go ahead and voucher or say yea or nay on that, would that be possible?
Mr. Palomares, that's kind of your-
Okay, uh, Mayor, I, I wasn't quite following what Mr. Rodriguez is asking, but, um, this agreement is, obviously, if you all approve it, it's going to be approved as is. If there's any changes that, uh, that may be proposed later, this agreement would have to be brought back with the proposed revisions and an amendment to, to the contract, so, um, you know-
I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, what I was going to say, uh, the agreement I agree in, and I'm assuming, uh, it looks like everybody's pretty much on board on this, what I'm more worried about is that, the agreement is there that there's no sewer fees, they're going to be charged to the bottling facility. The, what, what I, there's, what I don't see there, and I think it's fair for both parties, is that we both know how we're going to plum this and how they're aware that we're going to go ahead and set up the plumbing and get this taken care of before we go and start breaking down walls, throwing lines outside and so on, so forth. And then, like that, you guys see what we're going to do, we'll draw it out, we'll do something simple to give a kind of an idea where you guys could see how it's going to look out after we're done. And then if, you know, if there's questions or concerns or anything, I'm sure that's probably the best time to do it, just so we are on the same page that we're not going to go ahead and just do whatever we want and have that meter set up and so on, so forth. We all want to be in agreeance to all this, I'm assuming.
I think on this one, just to kind of clarify, and Henry, you can correct me if I may be wrong. Um, ideally, with this, Mr. Rodriguez, I think it really has nothing to do with the actual agreement, because what the agreement is about is the town acknowledging that that additional meter that is going to be put in, um, and Water King, and I guess, uh, your representatives are in agreement that that specific water line that's going to be put in is going to be only for the bottling, for the water that you distribute and sell, um, and that we are not going to be applying any rebate to that water. So I think, I think that's in a nutshell what the agreement is about in regards to the plans, the schematics of how that water line and stuff is going to be set up. I think that's something that we address with the building inspector and shouldn't have any negative impact, um, with the agreement, because like I said, this is just in regards to acknowledging that it's not going to be, uh, uh, there's not going to be a sewer fee, since that's going to be a dedicated line for just the water that you're bottling and for distribution. So I, I think, uh, most definitely, um, in regards to the agreement, I, I would re, I think it's something that we can move forward with as is, uh, because it is an understanding between the town and Water King on the use for that line and the applicable fees. I think, uh, in regards to anything else, we'll just meet with you and get with Ron, um, and set up the earliest meeting so they can go out there and look at the, the work site, see what you guys are planning, and if there's any, uh, recommendations or anything that Ron, as a building inspector, would recommend or guidelines that we have to follow, I think we can move and proceed forward with that without really having to do anything, uh, with the actual agreement in itself. Um, would you agree?
Mayor, I, I completely agree with everything you just said.
Mayor, I have Mr. Chavez, uh, raised his hand, Mr. Chavez?
Yeah, Mayor, um, just for clarification, is this going to be an indefinite, uh, um, thing? Because I don't want later on for, uh, the, uh, our next council or, you know, in case we're all voted out or whatever, I don't want them to come back and say, hey, well, it was only for a certain amount of time. You understand what I'm trying to say?
Sure, go for it, Henry.
Counselor Chavez, yes, it would be indefinitely as long as they have a dedicated line for, for that now, if they, if they, if they change the, um, if they make alterations to that dedicated water line, so it results in a deviation from its intended purpose, uh, which is serving as a dedicated water line for the water filtration and bottling process, then, then obviously, there'd be breach of the agreement and the agreement would become null and void. The city would then be able to assess sewer charges at that point. Uh, I don't know if that answers your question, uh, Counselor Chavez?
If town violates it, then Water King can come back towards the town.
Right, right, okay, okay.
And that was, that's what I was going to ask too, so I mean, I think we're all, yeah, and I think you have a point, uh, uh, there, Ben, that we should just go ahead and set up that meeting with, uh, Everett and, uh, Ron? Right. And, and we'll go from there. Um, I guess I'll con, how do I go about that? Do I contact Ms. Val or do I go straight to Everett and then go from Everett's appointment book? So I can make sure arrangements on, on what I need to do?
Yeah, I, I think Everett's on this line, and then Normal will coordinate with Ron, he's here on Wednesdays and Fridays, so we'll try and see if we can get something on the books for this Wednesday, um, if, you know, if, if that availability is there. Uh, but most likely, we'll move forward to try and push that and, you know, I know this is kind of something we've been working on for a while, so we'll make sure we can do, uh, everything on our part to expedite that process. That way, you guys can get going, uh, on what you have to do on your end and, um, we can get the ball rolling on this.
Mayor, can I have Mr. Weeks, he raised his hand?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is more of a formality, I think, than anything. This is the same agreement that we have with other companies, you know, Walgreens or, and, uh, truck stops and what, whatnot that have separate lines for the irrigation. I think the only reason we're having to do this is because it's after the fact and it's also drinkable water as opposed to irrigated water. Um, and, and I, and I see some points, but I, I think we can go ahead and move forward and, and I'll, I'll move to approve this, uh, uh, simply because it's, it's just more of a formality and, and as council, we shouldn't get into the day-to-day and micromanaging of the, the building inspector. So I, I think we should move forward.
Okay, I have a motion made by Mr. Weeks, do I have a second?
I'll, I'll stick it.
Who is that?
Mr. Garcia?
Yes, I'll stick.
Motion made by Mr. Weeks, seconded by Councilman Alfaro to approve the agreement, uh, between the town of Anthony Mountain Desert Water Company LLC, DBA, Water King, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for joining us on this call. Uh, we'll go ahead and get that agreement signed, put down in our records, and we'll give you a copy of that, and we're all set, sir.
Sounds good, thank you very much, guys, you guys have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Me too.
Uh, moving on to item four, discussion, consideration and action on an ordinance of the town of Anthony, Texas, approving Texas gas service. approving Texas Gas Service, a Division of One Gas Incorporated's use of financial instruments for hedging gas costs for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one heating season. Finding that the meeting complies with the Open uh Meetings Act declaring an effective date, repealing any prior ordinances inconsistent or inconsistent with this ordinance and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company. Mr. Palomares?
Mayor, uh, council, uh, this is an annual request that you all have seen obviously many times. It's uh the one made by by Texas Gas Service as required by rate schedule number one on cost of gla- uh gas clause. Uh, it requires the city to give its written approval in advance of the Texas Gas Service purchasing financial instruments. And the reason they they do they purchase the financial instruments is is to hedge the uh the increase of the cost of gas and and so they can manage the cost of gas as it is passed through to its customers. So this is an annual uh request that they make and you all have seen before. So uh this is the uh the a copy of the proposed ordinance that we have used before for your approval.
Any questions or comments from council? Do you have a motion on the table?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve by Councilman Chavez, seconded by Councilman Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pa- motion passes uh passes four to zero. Uh, on this one, Henry, do you guys need to do roll call or anything like that?
Yes. Okay, uh, Mayor Proten Weeks?
Yes.
Councilman Garcia?
Yes.
Councilman Chavez?
Yes.
Councilman Alvaro?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, moving on to item five, discussion, consideration, and action on renewing the school resource officer contract between the Anthony Independent School District and the Town of Anthony, Texas Police Department. Chief Enriquez?
So this is a two-year contract that we usually have with the Anthony ISD. This year, for the past two years, they've had two SROs. This year, they elected to go only with one because they're creating a uh security manager position. So in essence, they have their security staff right now. They're creating that position. So the need has uh diminished a little bit for the SRO, so they elected to go with one SRO. So this is um, we went over the contract. There was some back and forth stuff with um the town and the the school. So Henry had a chance to review it. The only um significant changes, the last minute that the school district made was on section seven. Um, Valerie, you can pull pull that one up?
Would it be number seven?
Uh, number seven, yes, where it says termination.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is the original one. It says either the school district or the town may terminate this agreement with or without cause upon a hundred and eighty days written notice to the party. So Henry reviewed it. He checked that everything looks good. Uh, however, like I said, the school sent out a new one. So I sent it to Val. I don't know if Val was able to pull it up, but on the new one they sent out, they uh uh huh, they reduced it from ninety days to, I mean, from a hundred and eighty days to ninety days with written notice to other parties. A hundred and eighty days, they're saying that it's pretty much the whole school year, so they would have to give us a school year. Um, and they also included, in the case of an emergency district closure to a natural disaster, and then he put in parentheses such as COVID nineteen pandemic, the school district or the town may terminate this agreement with or without cause upon thirty days written notice to the other party. So that is one of the the changes, the significant changes that they made, um stuff that was not in the one that I had sent to Henry. But other than that, everything is pretty much the same. Um, I know it's gonna be difficult for Henry to concur with me because he hasn't had a chance to review this one. Um, but that's the only thing I had Mr. Troncoso or Dr. Troncoso uh highlight the changes that he had made in order for Henry not to be going cuz poor Henry had to go line by line on a couple of them already to to ascertain if it was the only changes. So this is up for discussion on their next school board meeting. So I don't know if you all wanna take action, you wanna table it. Um, it's up to you all, but this is the contract for the next two years um at the rate of what we have right now in the collective bargaining.
Thank you, chief. Is there any question or comment from council about the agreement, anything that they see or have a question about? Um, my opinion, the uh the COVID nineteen kinda threw everybody for a loop. So I think, you know, being proactive, uh a termination clause like that due to a natural disaster or something you know, agreeable and fair with me. Um, I don't know what you guys think, so let's see what Henry says, but um, we'll leave the floor open for discussion. Is there any questions or comments?
I have Mr. Chavez and Mr. Weeks. So, Mr. Chavez, you would like to go first?
No, I was just, I was just gonna ask about the um this um clause that they added, the uh about the COVID emergency disaster. Uh right now, are they still, are we still under contract with them?
Yes, correct. Right now, we still under contract with them. They have been paying. The reason uh Mr. Troncoso wanted to add that on there is because when this uh natural disaster, the pandemic hit, he wanted to terminate the contract, of course, with within the within the notice, but we we still fall past with the ninety days, but he wanted to see if we can terminate it immediately. So I got with Henry and Henry said, well, there is no justification on the contract. You know, uh force majeure that will cause us to say, okay, yeah, we we can null and void the the contract. So as far as we're concerned, there's still, even though that the officers aren't physically there at the school, they they uh they're still bonded, fined by the contract. So that's why Dr. Troncoso wanted to uh insert that clause in there so they they can have thirty days uh cuz they're they weren't using them, but yes, sir, we're still under contract with them and they still, they have been paying.
And they're they're paying for both of the cops, right, for both of the officers?
That is correct, sir. Yes, they are.
Okay.
Mr. Chi- Mr. Weeks, would you like to add?
Well, I just, uh, this wasn't one of my things, but to clarify, they're really not paying for the officers anymore cuz school's out. So we're we're paying for those officers, chief. Is that correct?
That's correct. Now we started paying their last day, what was the last? Uh, I believe it was the twenty-second, the day before um the Friday before Memorial Day. That was when the school ended and that's when they they uh terminated paying the two officers. So now they're on our payroll.
Okay, and then I I think, did it change a little bit too? Didn't it used to be like uh they had them for a few more weeks, but now they're only having them for thirty-six weeks out of the fifty-two and we have them for sixteen?
Um, I believe so. We have, they asked for them for a hundred and eighty days, which is a school year. Um he said that now they're going to year round, but the days are still the same. Uh, so we're still having them for one eighty and one eighty, pretty much.
Um, and I assume that 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 their numbers include the matching payroll taxes and the things that we have to pay when you figure your fringe benefit?
Yes, sir. So if you go down, Valerie, on the on the um contract, you'll see where it has the breakdown. Right there. So if you if you look at that, Mr. Weeks, for year one, it's at fifteen thousand hour uh eight hours a day, a total of fourteen, forty uh hours, a hundred and eighty school days and has twenty-nine point seven nine percent of fringe. So for fringe for that one officer is six thousand eight hundred sixty-three sixty-one uh based on those those figures. So a total of twenty-nine thousand nine oh three fifty-two is what they pay on year one. Year two is thirty thousand to include the fringe.
So so then my last question is, say we approve this agreement, we have an officer, he's an SRO officer, and they decide because the numbers are still high that they're gonna do online schooling this next semester. Does that means we have to let that officer go cuz they're gonna cancel the contract? Is is that correct?
Uh, if they comply with the ninety days written notice to the other party, um yes, sir, either we let him go or we just keep him as part-time.
Okay, cuz I mean, really, because they threw, didn't they, you said they threw a COVID deal in about thirty days, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. That's on uh number seven on the termination of the contract.
So that that's even less than the ninety days. So I mean, I just didn't know how if this would affect any of our officers or the collective bargaining where we agree to do this and we have an officer set up with a job and then you know, they're doing on on, they they decided to go online. And you know, so this could all change in two months.
Right, so if you if you remember on the collective bargaining, really, the only thing, we're we're not tied down to a set of of uh officers or we're not tied down to a a contract. The contract is pretty much for the for the city city sake. Um, that way we can recoup any losses or any investment that we make towards the officer. So in essence, it stays even in the contract that we have them written up for three years. That if they leave voluntary or involuntary, then they're still subject to pay back everything that that we have. So we're not bound by the CBA as far as uh keeping anybody's employment. We're bounded by keep keeping their pay, but not the employment.
Well, I just think it's fair that whoever this officer is understands the particulars of the situation. And you know, before he accepts the position because he may not have a job in September.
Right, so the officer that we have right now, he he's aware of that even though he's been requesting um to go to to patrol and fill one of the the vacant patrol slots. Uh, but again, right now, we don't have anybody trained with the particulars that we need to serve uh as the SRO because by by certain standards that TECO and the state have uh set up, we he has to meet certain requirements such as uh specialized training that he has to have in order to serve as a school resource officer.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Henry, any thoughts?
Mayor, I I looked at the those revisions, they looked fine to me. I mean, as far from a legal standpoint now, as far as uh whether that's some something that the town's willing to to accept the town council. And that's entirely your decision, but from a legal standpoint, I mean, it's a rash, it's a reasonable uh clause that they included in there. Now, you may wanna tweak it, you might wanna consider where it says natural disaster. I don't know if you want it to say state declared natural disaster. Uh, you know, but because if if it's uh the way it is, natural disaster, then that might be a a force majeure, which would be, let's say, you know, God forbid, but uh some natural disaster, a flood or uh you you know, a tornado or something, you know, so but even if you kept that to include those other types of natural disasters that where it's not as necessarily state declared uh or locally declared. Um, I mean, it's still a reasonable request from a legal standpoint.
Henry, can can we put, can we put on there? Because I see I see that as uh as something they can use like a loophole pretty much to say, hey, well, um, like for example, if we go back to the flood of two thousand and six, it was the state declared a natural disaster or or a state of emergency, so they can turn around and say, well, we closed the district for a week, two weeks, and we're gonna get rid of them or what have you. Is there another, some other verbiage that we can utilize instead of natural disaster that we can add on there that you can think of?
Chief, other than than just doing it as local or locally, a local or state-declared natural disaster? Because then that that'll tie it to some official government action that recognized the event to that level. I mean, that's a suggestion.
Recognizing it, I see as a state, uh as a state-declared disaster would be more ideal.
Or what, can we push it a little further to say like a presidential declaration?
Well, I mean, that could, we we could do that, chief, as well, but I mean, I think um you know, I don't know if it would reach cuz cuz it obviously if it's presidential, then it's nationwide. Now, this could be more of a of a regional natural disaster. So that would fall more along a locally declared or which would be one declared by, let's say, the mayor, where where like similar to what happened in this case, and then obviously a a state declared by by the governor. So I mean, those were the suggestions that I would recommend. I don't think doing it presidential would be reasonable.
Okay.
Ma- Mayor Proten Weeks, I know you raised your hand.
Yeah, yeah, Henry, um, I think that's a good point because they, everything may be on the up and up and everybody, you know, the state's saying everything can be open, the numbers are good. But then the school district itself just, you know, votes to go online this next semester to be safe. So then this contract's at their mercy, not necessarily a nat- national disaster. You know, they can just say, well, we're not comfortable cuz of COVID, but maybe the numbers are all good and everything, everything's fine.
I like the idea of the state disaster, uh cuz ideally, even when it came down to President Trump um would uh usually he left it down to the local govern, the the state governors um to make certain calls. So I think that would kinda be fair cuz then it gives opportunity to address things that are happening within our regional area. Um, but also not it not it be something that li- that's so light that anything can be pretty much called on it. Uh, I think leaving it up to a state is pretty much, you know, ideally, when those get called, it's something that's affecting a whole. So uh I I like the idea of leaving it up to a state-declared disaster. Henry?
Uh, Mayor, uh, Counselor Weeks, but keep in mind, as indicated on this agreement, there's that ninety-day uh termination window notice. So even if there isn't a natural, the state declared natural disaster and the uh the school district wanted out, they'd have to give the ninety-day advance notice. So it would basically tack in, you know, the the, they'd have to cover a couple more months of of salary uh before they can get out. So it'd be total, obviously total of three months. But just keep that in mind that that window is there. On the prior contract, obviously, it was a hundred and eighty days, right, chief? So.
Um, correct. I I believe it still was, it was a hundred and eighty days. I think it actually was ninety days. I don't know how the one eighty got in there on the on the first, the original one, the one that's standing right now.
So Henry, their their thirty-day for the COVID doesn't uh cuz it says may terminate this agreement with or without cause upon thirty days written notice if it's a disaster. So that doesn't that go, that the ninety days no longer applies if it's a disaster?
Yeah, it just shows the 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 time period that they have to give notice. But let's say that they 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 say, no, you know what? We wanna go online. You know, as long as they give ninety days no advance notice, they'll be able to do that. You know, and they're on the hook for those additional sixty days, right? If it were to be a, you know, you if if it would have been a state-declared natural disaster, it would just be thirty days. So they can still get out with the ninety days. I don't recall, chief, what the prior prior contract was. Was it a hundred and eighty days? That wasn't clear to me.
Uh, let let me look it up. I'm looking it up as we speak. I'm just trying to find the email that they sent me. Give me a quick minute.
Uh, Henry, but I, it should say state and local disasters, don't you think?
Uh, I mean, that's that's something that that can be done there, uh considered, Counselor Chavez, because you possibly could have a more a more stringent regional disaster that may not be recognized by the state, uh, will be recognized by the mayor. You know, because it's just in within the town of Anthony, closer further out. So.
So yes, uh at the current standing contract, we do have it at a hundred and eighty days, sir. Yes, sir.
So Mayor, Council, also Counselor Weeks, Counselor Chavez, I mean, again, that's really you all's decision. You know, it's more obviously budgeting as well and all that. I mean, if you all wanna agree to reduce that to ninety days, I mean, that's not necessarily a legal decision. Uh, so I just pretty much leave it up to you all. Mayor?
You know what? I mean, in my opinion, Henry, I mean, the ninety-eight, ninety days is not bad. I- if you look at it on their aspect and us, I mean, we're not trying to tie them to anything. I mean, if they're not utilizing the officer, I mean, even for an extra ninety days, thirty days, once they've decided to, you know, cancel the contract, I think that's good enough. I mean, you know, these are all agreements that we have between entities. I mean, we gotta give them a little bit out, you know, we're not gonna have them sign a contract for a full year or for two years and try and hold them to it for an additional year, you know? I think that's just trying to squeeze um a little bit too much out of something that's really necessary in a hundred and eighty days. I mean, for they approved it back then, I mean, that's I mean, for they approved it back then, I mean, that, I mean, that's pretty good for us uh on a contract level for our standpoint. But I think ninety days is, is, is pretty, is a pretty decent and reasonable um offer. I don't see really too administratively uh with that request. What do you guys think? Any comments?
Well, I, I agree with you, Ben. I just think we need to have a little better wording in there because it says as determined by the district. You know, not determined by the, you know, the government or, you know, so it could just be they decide to do it one more semester. I mean, you're right, we're not gonna hold them to anything like that, but we also, you know, we, we hold somebody's employment in our hands at the same time.
I, I, I
Yeah, that's
Saying it to a, a state declared a disaster, um, but I would think that's about as pretty good as we can get or as far as we could go.
Well, Ben I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh contract with the wording in there stating that uh state and local disasters.
My second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Chavez wanting to change the verbiage um to a state and local disaster. Uh, seconded by Mr. Weeks. All in favor?
Hi.
Right. Any opposed? So chief, uh, motion four to zero, we can send that to the school board with the revised verbiage and see what they have to say. And then if they kick it back, they'll kick it back and we'll discuss uh at a later time.
Okay, got you. I'll send, I'll, I'll make the change and I'll send it off to the school tomorrow and I'll CC you and Henry on it.
Alrighty, I appreciate it, chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, moving over uh to item six, discussion, consideration and action on an ordinance of the town of Anthony, Texas. Adopting a moratorium of the prohibition on the sale and ignition of fireworks under the Anthony Municipal Code Title Eight, Health and Safety, Chapter eight dot zero eight, fireworks, firearms and explosives. Section eight dot zero eight dot zero one oh, restriction generally for the Fourth of July holiday of the year twenty twenty with a limited duration and scope. Uh, Mr. Paulo Maris.
Mayor, uh, Council, obviously this is another item that you see on an annual basis. Um, it's your annual moratorium on your fireworks ordinance. Um, you, you, you are well aware of the dates. Uh, dates would be June twenty third through midnight on July the fourth uh on the sale and, you know, possessing the fireworks. And then uh just as far as igniting fireworks, it would only be on July the fourth from seven AM until eleven fifty nine PM. So I got not, not much more to say than that. It's something you all have seen before. Uh, Mayor?
Okay, um, Valerie, do we have, did Mr. Vieramontes ever make it to uh get on the line?
No, sir. I did the whole process, but I couldn't connect. I mean, I had it on the website as well, so I, I, I wish you could have contacted me earlier. Um, I did do tests with Angel uh from Water King and Mr. Alarete for this reason, so I couldn't get in. And I have both monitors taken, so I couldn't email him.
No problem, ma'am. Just to kind of give you guys a heads up, uh, we just had uh, mayoral meeting with Judge Samaniego, and we were talking about the drought index. At this point, it was like, I think like four point four, um, which ideally in order for them to prohibit the sale of fireworks on a, on a safety standpoint, it'd have to be over, well over five point six. So we're not even there yet. Um, and when we were discussing, you know, Fourth of July celebrations, I know they did discuss how some of the uh larger venues that did fireworks display were not gonna have them this year. Because they're limiting, I think, the gatherings of, of those types to at least five hundred. Um, and they are sending guidelines for anybody celebrating this Fourth of July. Um, that there can be no more than ten people per social gathering. Um, and then they are gonna be sending some guidelines and recommendations for social distancing to all the fireworks stands and distributors. So at this moment in time, you know, according to the judge and everybody, um, the sale of fireworks is gonna be uh allowed. Nothing is gonna be illegal. They are just requesting uh as a request, keep in mind that they don't sell any uh fin or I think rocket uh fire, uh type fireworks. But that was just a request. Those aren't banned or anything at this moment in time. So uh, at this point, all fireworks stands have the green light to go this year um, as well as the celebration. So if there's any questions, uh, I'll open it to council. Um, but Mr. Vieramontes is applying uh this year and other fireworks stands are applying for the permits to uh sell fireworks within the town limits.
Mayor Protim Weeks?
Yeah, guys, every, every year we bring this up and every year, you know, I vote against it, but I vote against it because we always say, we'll start it on a certain date and fireworks can only be done, done at a certain time. And we all know that for the week leading up and three days after, all morning, noon and night, fireworks are going off. And we, people get reported and people get mad, but we don't really enforce it. And I'm not saying the police don't do their job. But I'm saying we don't really enforce the, the actions of the people that are shooting the fireworks all over the place at all hours and all days. So now we have a lot more people staying at home with COVID going on. And, you know, the pet issue as well, how are we going to uh ensure that we enforce? I mean, let's not just put it on paper, but let's enforce the rules and crack down on people that start the weekend before.
If I can have a comment, chief, I know you're gonna have a response for this as well. Um, one of the things, Mr. Weeks, that I did want to comment and state, uh, just like it comes to uh traffic regulations to gun laws, right? Um, there are individuals that may not follow the rules, but that shouldn't take away from law abiding citizens that are following the rules and amending to the, following the laws and the rules and the regulations. Um, I think honestly, uh, chief can tell you in regards to enforcement, here in the town of Anthony, uh, we have a zero tolerance uh for that and get reports. The individuals that are caught, chief, if you wanna uh, uh, you know, jump in. Um, their fireworks are confiscated and they are issued citations. And in regards to the amount of people, one of the things that we were seeing is we had low occurrences of individuals popping fireworks here on the Texas side while they were very high on the Anthony, New Mexico side.
Right. So what the officers were doing this past year is that they were not only issuing the citations, but in, in extreme cases, yes, they were taking away their fireworks. However, officers were cognizant about these uh individuals, how much money they spent at the local businesses and how much money they had consumed, et cetera. So they were allowed, some of them were allowed to shoot their fireworks again because we knew the expense, but they did uh issue citations. Once they had a second call, then at that point, the officers would go ahead and issue a second citation and then subsequently go ahead and confiscate the fireworks. We were issuing, we were giving the fireworks over to the fire department so they can do the destruction. Um, however, Chief Esparsa advised differently that we can do it a different way. Uh, our evidence designation that we send them out to get trained for how to do proper disposal and know it was not popping it themselves. They actually had to dial some and put them in, in canisters, e- et cetera. But um, again, no, yes, the officers were very aware, they were out there and a lot of these um incidences that we were getting reports on, they were on the New Mexico side. Officers would respond out there and then we had a lot of calls by the, in the Anthony Heights area where we ended up finding out that unfortunately our state is pretty much, it's a very weird way it's shaped. So officers would go out there and then kind of find out it was on the New Mexico, New Mexico side. Would contact Anthony, New Mexico PD, they would do whatever they needed to do on their side as far as the regulations with the bottle rockets, et cetera, but uh, the majority of them, the mayor is correct, they were on, on the New Mexico side, but the ones in Texas, they were issued citations and they were, some of them were confiscated.
Ben, Ben, do you know is Wet and Wild gonna do their fireworks this year?
Uh, with the limited resources that they have, you know, as we try to look into one year, setting up a fireworks display. Um, those things cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'll reach out to Conan to see if they're gonna do it. But with the limited um activity that they have at the water park, I don't think that's something that, that, that we may see this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, discussion or action, uh, uh, comments on this item from council?
I'd like to motion to approve.
I have a motion made by Mr. Chavez to approve, approve the moratorium um, on the prohibition on the sale and ignition of fireworks under the Anthony Municipal Code. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Garcia. All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Three, three to zero. Uh, thank you, guys.
Can I get roll call?
Yep.
Mayor Protim Sean Weeks?
No.
Mayor, Mayor Weeks, Mayor Protim Weeks? No? Councilman Garcia?
Yes.
Councilman Chavez?
Yes.
Councilman Alfaro?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Moving on to departmental reports, streets. As you guys know, uh, town crews are currently wa- uh, gonna start working. I think not town crews, but the uh, uh, cubic water that we have uh, for the popular project, um, that's kind of been stopped momentarily because of the fact that we have to uh redo the water line there. Uh, we're looking at pretty much a two week timeframe to get that done. Uh, Ebert and Cubic Water will be coordinating for the water shut offs for the residents. They're gonna look at doing some of the work during the day and other work during the night. That way they can look at doing the shut offs during the night. That way they can uh impact the least amount of people uh, during that time. Now, uh, moving on with Tech Dot, everything for FM nineteen oh five is moving smoothly. We're not having any major hiccups or issues there. The only thing that we are concerned about, and that's something that was brought up at the last NPO meeting. Right now with all the cities, not only El Paso, but on a statewide level, the, the decrease in revenue that they're seeing. One of the things that we're concerned about is seeing a significant drop in available funding for street projects. Moving on probably for fiscal year twenty one, which includes FM nineteen oh five and onwards. So that's something that we're still gonna be keeping our ears to the ground uh on. But, you know, don't be surprised if we get some projects or something that get pushed back or, you know, cut out just because of funding availability. So be forewarned. Um, in regards to Wildcat Drive, consistently, uh, even, I wouldn't consider it a traffic with vehicles, but for foot traffic, um, chief, we gotta look into or see what we can set up. I already talked to Ebert. We purchased, now that we finally took over the project and it was signed over to us, um, we're gonna be getting some of those uh little uh doggy bag fecal, you know, canisters and stuff to put out throughout the walkway, but we've got residents out there being careless and just letting their dogs literally drop deuces all over that place in the middle of sidewalk and nobody's picking it up. Um, and some of us and a lot of people that actually walk the area kind of have an idea of who it is. But, you know, we're gonna try and put up those little uh receptacles to try and minimize and encourage individuals to pick up after their pets, which they should be doing. Um, but that's one of the issues that we've been seeing right now. We, we are seeing a lot of people on the walkways and stuff. Um, but, I mean, that's what's going on. We are looking at setting up speed bumps in some of the areas, the high traffic areas. We did get two or three areas marked up in the heights that I had recently request for. The reason we took a little bit of time on that is because due to the COVID nineteen, some of the manufacturing plants in some of the areas where we were getting the speed bumps and stuff were, uh, weren't available for shipping uh, due to COVID nineteen, but we did get some already uh in place and we do have some spots around town that we're gonna look at uh, setting those up. If there are any residents or anybody else that sees a high traffic area, you know, we'll get chief to coordinate some traffic enforcement in the area, but if it continues to be a problem, then we'll look up at setting up those temporary speed bumps. Um, as of now, we have, uh, that's it for streets for me. Anything else from council? Any comments, chief?
Sir, um, question that I have, have you by any chance gotten in contact? And I know the answer's gonna be pretty much generic, the same that we get from other, other entities, but from Tech Dot, have you gotten any response back to the request that we had gotten as far as the um, speed limit signs, you know, how they were supposed to go pick them up?
Yeah, a lot of the projects that they've been working on, some of them got a little bit delayed. They've been falling behind on some of the timelines for those. I know they just got the executive ramp uh opened up this past weekend. Um, so I think they're ramping up on those. I will reach out to George. We have been having, uh, I'll be honest, we have, we've been having some communication issues with Tech Dot in regards to the West Side Department. Um, and that's something that I'm bringing it up to Marty Boyd, you know, uh, one of the higher ups and directors for Tech Dot. Um, because I think this issue needs to be addressed. We had something pop off on Wildcat. Um, we've been reaching out to the, the West Side Tech Dot reps for some time now already uh, for them to replace some of the landscaping uh before they signed it over to us. And one day to the next, this guy just dropped in with Ebert, told them they were signing over the project and we haven't heard from him since. So that's something that I'm gonna, uh, that is a big issue that I'm gonna get very vocal about with Tech Dot. Um, considering that the town ended up contributing seventy eight thousand of what really wasn't budgeted before um, for those improvements. So, you know, we need to make sure that our value and the money we put in is guaranteed. Um, and before we take it over and then we'll go from there, but uh, I haven't heard anything back from them and I'm actually uh gonna be calling Marty and CCing George, uh, see if I get a response, because that's usually the only time I get one uh from the West Side office. So uh, I'll keep you posted on that, but we do need to get those speed uh traffic signs and stuff up because I do see a lot of individuals speeding.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ben, too, when you talk to Tech Dot, uh, you can even use my name with how disappointed we were to come home and force something and have our exit closed with no warning. You know, usually there's a sign at Benton saying exit Anthony clo- you know, zero closed, whatever. I mean, my wife pulled, we were in different cars and she turned around at the Anthony, New Mexico exit. I went all the way to Vado, turned around and I beat her home. That's how many cars were like, I mean, there was half a mile of cars lined up on the highway.
Chief, did you get any feedback on that? Did they reach out at all?
No, sir. Actually, I found out when, when they, when one of the traffic guys called me and said, did I have any idea? Dispatch also called me. I had no idea. I looked back at the, at the emails that Tech Dot sent out. I could not find anything saying, hey, there's a notice that we're gonna close uh exit zero. I still have yet, I know we have complaints that the people that were doing the construction or whatever they were doing, Eagle Construction left their vehicles there along with some barrels, but no, sir, I, I never got any, any notice for warning.
Yeah, and, and like I said, those were some of the issues that we've been having because usually on Tech Dot and I get, I, I directed some residents, which they were upset because we didn't provide them with that information. But we, we, I shared the email site and log on to keep up with Tech Dot's, um, you know, roadway projects and whenever they have shutdowns and stuff. But when I looked at the map as well, there was nothing on there. So either something had to have happened immediately at that point that they had to, you know, shut, shut it down to address it, but it was not on their list of scheduled projects. I didn't see anything about it. I wasn't called about anything about it. Um, but yet, you know, we're, we're always to blame, right? For, for not knowing what's going on. So um, I know it's frustrating with Tech Dot, but those are some of the things that we need to address. And like I said, I'm, I'm going up the chain uh, with Tech Dot to get that addressed because I feel, you know, the representation that we're getting from the West Side office is pretty much non-existent. And the only time that we get any, any, any feedback or follow up from those individuals is when we're messaging uh and CCing those individuals. So that's something that we'll address uh coming up soon and I'll keep you guys posted. Um, hopefully we can just get a whole new representative and, and have somebody else uh take over, you know, being the point of contact for Tech Dot because it's getting ridiculous and uh it's unacceptable. Moving on to uh Parks and Recreation, uh, Mr. Hakes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I can hear you. I don't, sir, what, on the parks, are you guys gonna hear me? I mean, they're still closed, so we're working on them. We're gonna fertilize them. As you can see, I mean, they're, they're looking good. We are fixing some of the shelters, we're painting them. We're still gonna repair some of them still on the big part. But other than that, the parks, they're coming along real well. We fixed all the irrigation. We, we haven't had any issues at the Torres Altos. Uh, we have I didn't, I didn't get that, Mayor. I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't, I didn't get that, Mayor, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yep, we've kind of stopped having those issues.
Yes, sir, we, we did, we did, and everything's going well, sir.
In regards to Parks and Recs, guys, uh, I've had a lot of residents reach out about when they're opening the parks. I know El Paso was moving forward with opening some of their parks already. The last conversation I had with Judge Samaniego is that they were keeping the county ones closed, uh, because of the fact that they can't police and maintain the social distancing orders there. Um, and it'd probably be more likely that, you know, gatherings of more than ten would take place. So, he asked Anthony to follow in the county's, uh, uh, move in keeping them closed. Um, at this moment in time, that's what we'll do until we hear or, or get a direct, uh, confirmation or email saying that they're gonna move forward with opening up. But one of the things that I am, uh, reaching out to the judge for and see if we can, you know, get some support is at least with opening up the dog parks. Uh, we get people, they can go out there on wa- on walking paths, bike trails and all that to exercise. But, you know, man's best friend, uh, should be able to have that same opportunity. There's a lot of individuals that, you know, take their dogs actively out to the dog parks. It's their form of exercise and whatnot. And most of them anyways do maintain, uh, you know, six feet of distance and stuff from each other. So, I'm waiting to see if I can get confirmation on at least opening the dog parks for now. Uh, but I'll keep you guys posted. Before this, uh, you know, years out, you know, we wanna let residents know and everybody know, um, in regards to with the COVID and some of the financial shortfalls that we've seen with the town because of it, one of the projects and two of the projects that we did put on a temporary hold was the lighting project for Triangle and also the Wildcat Park Project. We just wanna let everybody know that Phase One and Phase Two of those projects were being put on temporary hold until where we see where the finances are due to the COVID nineteen. But soon as we get back on track, we'll start getting project, uh, that project on Wildcat taken care of and we will finish up the lighting project on Triangle. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, we'll go ahead and move on to Police and Fire, Chief.
Sir, I sent, uh, Valerie a, uh, the abandoned motor vehicle auction recap. Valerie, we can bring that up? Okay, I just wanted to touch bases with you all, uh, let you know that we did, uh, hold on, uh, May thirtieth, the auction. We do, we try to do this once a year. The reason we do it once a year is because it gives us an opportunity to be able to, to have enough vehicles to be able to be worth the expense that we, uh, incur as far as overtime, uh, with the officers being out there. And then, of course, uh, make it worthwhile for the auctioneer, because the auctioneer takes ten percent of the gross profits that come in. So, if you, if you can see, we, uh, we had an auction for the abandoned, uh, and forfeited motor vehicles. It was held at the Department Storage, held at one-on-one Richard White. There were a total of twenty-nine abandoned vehicles that were sold at public auction and one piece of, uh, police equipment that was sold, which was a generator. Uh, gates open at seven-thirty for previewing and auction commence at zero nine hundred. Uh, the auction completed approximately at nine forty-five, so as you can tell, everything went, uh, pretty fast. We did, uh, adhere to the social distancing. We did have, uh, everybody show up with face masks or face coverings. If they weren't, then they weren't allowed to, to bid. They weren't allowed to be there. Um, one vehicle, a ninety-nine, ninety-six Ford F- one fifty, uh, was pulled from the auction and it was titled, uh, to the town for law enforcement, uh, use. Um, there were no incidents before or after the auction and then there were no discrepancies upon reconciliation of the monies at the end of the auction. The total gross amount of the sale was thirty-six thousand dollars. So, the distribution itself, uh, three thousand six hundred goes to the auctioneer. So, like I said, uh, ten percent of that goes to that. The reason he gets that fee is because not only does he do the auction and he's a licensed auctioneer, but he also has a following and he puts it on all the other sites that he has. He personally picks up the phone and calls previous individuals that have participated in, in the auctions and invites them over. So, we end up with, with a huge amount of, uh, individuals out there. So, if I'm not mistaken, we had a little over fifty bidders, um, at that location. So, um, that's how the, the auction went. So, the Anthony Police Department abandoned motor vehicle accounted after the thirty-six hundred dollars that the auctioneer takes, uh, it was twenty-seven thousand six forty. Ninety-day escrow, uh, that goes to the JAG account, which is four thousand seven hundred and sixty. What the ninety-day escrow is, is there's a couple of vehicles that have lien holders. So, we allow for the lien holders to come in and say that they need to collect whatever escrow there is. So, with that being said, i- it's broken down as far as what the escrow was, what the, what the sale amount was and what was, uh, uh, due for the storage fee. So, as you can see, if, if we would have not sold all the vehicles, but everybody would have picked up their vehicles, um, before the auction, the outstanding storage fee, total a hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty. We give ample time for individuals to, to get their vehicles out of the impound. So, since we hold the vehicles for, for, um, about a year, they still have up to the day of the auction to take out their vehicles and just pay the storage fees and all the, the fees associated with it. So, just because they get notified and they're put on the auction list does not mean that they still cannot take out their vehicles. So, if we go a little bit further, you'll see how the vehicles were, were sold.
And that's exactly a good point that you're touching on, Chief, because, you know, I get residents and of course you've got individuals, you know, that are trying to make an issue with it. Um, but the town of Anthony follows every protocol in place in order to give the car owner fair opportunity to claim their vehicle, correct?
That, that is correct. We, we do send out notices to all the, uh, the registered owners that we get on, on the return. We send that out to also any lien holders that, that are on the, on the titles themselves. So, we give them ample opportunity. W- we're, so we give out a notice within twenty-four hours and another notice within forty-eight hours subsequent to that. So, again, everything is certified mail, so we get either a return or we get a denial, whatever it is, and we hold it all. Uh, there has been instances where the lien holder is, uh, made aware and the lien holder still puts it out for, uh, repossession, if you will. But, of course, the individuals that have the vehicles have the documentation from us and have the, the auction receipts where they bought it at, at auction. And then we have all the documentation to support it, that we did every effort that we, that we could to notify not only the, the current holders, but the lien holders to be able to take them out. Even if the current registered owners aren't on there, but the previous registered owners, we send them out notifications to say, hey, this vehicle that was last registered in your name is in our storage lot, please come pick it up. If not, they get sold.
We, we can be quite frank, right? Some of these individuals that incur these high fees or they end up leaving their cars or something and it, and it gets up there. Most of the time, these are the individuals that end up coming back to bid on their car, because they can actually end up sometimes at times auctioning it off and getting it bid for less than what they owe, right?
That, that's correct. So, for example, we had a vehicle that, um, was impounded. The, the re- the registered owner came out and paid for the storage fees, paid for the impound fees, et cetera. However, during that time, we had an incident that occurred within the substation, so we couldn't get into the, into the impound lot. So, we advised them to follow back on Monday, so we would allow them to store their vehicle there. It was a vehicle that was, uh, impounded because it was actually parked on the sidewalk. Um, so it had, it also had been creating a nuisance for many, many years, literally years where we picked it up at. So, we gave them an opportunity to be able to, to pick up their vehicle with no fees attached, because they had already paid. Um, for, I mean, I think I gave them over a month to go pick it up, uh, without any fees being incurred, but they never took advantage and they left it there sitting in the impound lot for over two years. So, we gave them notices for the two years to ask them to come please pick up their vehicle. Um, they didn't, so they incurred just the storage fees alone, because it's twenty dollars, because that's what state law allows, plus tax. Um, and the day of, or the week of the auction, they called to say that they wanted to take out their vehicle. We let them know what their storage fees were. Of course, their storage fees were, I mean, they were over fifteen thousand. So, we told them, you know, if, if, if you wanna pay it, you can pay it, but what we recommend is just come out here, bid on your car and, you know, have a better luck to trying to win it rather than paying the storage fee. So, we give them the, the best of two options and, like I said, we're not here to make the money. We're here to help them out as much as we can.
Thank you, Chief, but we establish accountability, right?
That is correct. So, we establish accountability and everything is very transparent. So, as you can see by, by the items that, that are on your screen, that's what, where all the vehicles went. And the ones that you see with a dash, for example, number twelve, that you see dashes, those are vehicles that were actually pulled before the auction, because the person realized, hey, um, I won't have, i- it's better if I just pay it. So, we pulled it from the auction, because they paid all their storage fees and there was a couple of other vehicles out there. So, I mean, a- as you see, that's where, what all the vehicles sold for. At the very bottom, you'll see that it was, uh, thirty-six thousand, like it was mentioned. That generator, that Honda generator sixty-five hundred was one of the police equipment that we've had there. We had their standing, um, and it was in the best interest just to go ahead and, and sell it for whoever needed it for during this pandemic. Maybe they didn't have any electricity or, or what have you. They can utilize, uh, the gasoline, so they can power up whatever they need to power up. Um, so, it, continuing on, on the next page, you'll see, uh, that it has the amount of the sale, the auctioneer fees, the toll invoiced, impound fees and, uh, toll impound fees, notification fees, the storage fees. So, you can, you can compare what the storage fees were, like for example, that two thousand two, uh, Oldsmobile. We've had it, we had it in there forever, so the storage fees alone were fourteen thousand and it ended up selling for six hundred and fifty. So, that's a perfect example, Mayor, of what you were asking about. Another one was that Volvo, fourteen thousand, and it sold for five hundred and fifty. So, you'll see as it goes along, a hundred and thirty-five thousand is what we would have collected on storage fees if everybody would have picked up their, their vehicles and they didn't. So, overall, we're gonna look to utilize, uh, this funding, since if you can recall, I had requested for, um, cameras for the units and right now, the way things are, we need to go ahead and protect, um, not only the community, but we need to protect everybody out there. The people that we're dealing with, our officers, you know, and having a third set of eyes is gonna be key, because it provides an unbiased look of what is really going on in the situation. So, I feel that this money will be, uh, greatly utilized for us to be able to purchase the, the outdated equipment that we have on our vehicles, uh, as far as the onboard unit cameras. And we have the accountability that it uploads to the cloud and there's no, uh, there's no chance of anybody being able to tamper or, or delete any type of, uh, any type of video. Right now, the, what we have in, in our system, i- in our unit is memory card onboard cameras, where the officer can remove the, the memory card, um, by them transitioning over into our servers. They can get lost, it can get corrupted, you know, God forbid. Thank God, right now, we haven't had any, but any officer can subsequently, if they wanted to, they can, uh, delete any type of videos. We haven't had that happen, because we always have a supervisor. Um, uh, we're supervising the transmission of the data being sent out to the server. So, that's what I would like to do with, with some of the proceeds that we're, that we're getting from here to buy those cameras. And then, of course, we utilize these proceeds to help the officers with the Employee Assistance Program Fund, which basically is any type of, uh, counseling that they need. So, that's a quick breakdown of what we have. And then, Mayor, I know you'll touch on the, uh, the distribution.
Yes, moving on with, uh, the, uh, Police and Fire, the, uh, El Paso's Fighting Hunger, like we said, um, Governor Abbott, you know, approved a significant amount of, uh, relief funds, uh, to be able to provide food distribution and rations for a lot of, uh, families here in Texas. Um, and, you know, at the last or the previous mayor's meeting, um, you know, we met and got a presentation from, you know, one of the main, uh, coordinators for El Paso's Fighting Hunger. And I personally had reached out to her and said, you know, what can we do for Anthony? Um, and lately, uh, these past two times, we've been able to provide food, uh, distribution for over two hundred and fifty families. So, that's always a positive. We've been able to help out some of the residential families out of New Mexico, because we're not turning anybody away. And being a small community like we are and located where we're at regionally, it would, it wouldn't be neighborly of, um, of us as a municipality to turn away our neighbors on the New Mexico side. So, they're definitely more than welcome and encouraged to come out and take part in the food distribution. Um, right now, those are set on the books until further notice. They will be every Thursday from eight to ten o'clock in the morning at the Anthony Municipal Park. Um, working with Ebert and Chief Enriquez, we've established a very solid system of being able to hand out and knock out those food distributions in a, in a timely manner. And we've got nothing but praise from the, uh, individuals working with El Paso's Fighting Hunger on how efficient and quick we are at getting those rations out. So, just wanted to share with everybody, once again, every Thursday from here on out, eight o'clock to ten AM in the morning, eight in the morning to ten AM, we are setting up for food distribution and partnering with El Paso's Fighting Hunger. So, for those Anthony, Texas residents, surrounding residents in Anthony, New Mexico, Benton and the region, if you guys are needing food donations, definitely, uh, don't be afraid, come on out, uh, to the Anthony Municipal Park at one hundred Richard White Drive in Anthony, Texas. Um, is that all, Chief? Anything else to add?
No, sir, you sounded like a commercial man, but no, you're good.
I got a couple of things, Ben.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Chief, on the front yard parking, we got rid of all front yard parking, I believe. It's not even allowed on, on evenings or weekends. Is that correct?
That's correct. The only ti- the only time it's, it's allowed is if they have the parking pavers, concrete, but no landscaping. But yes, we got rid of the, the timelines.
Se- several people, esp- esp- well, you know, I see my neighborhood, s- uh, several people are, have gotten lazy with that. And I'm not saying you gotta crack down on them, but I'm just letting you be aware of it. And then, uh, another thing is, um, I don't know how far Anthony, you guys go, like, all the way to the river? You know, along like the walking path and stuff? Um, along the river, close to where it ends, where it becomes New Mexico, i- is any of that Anthony, Texas?
Yes, sir, it is.
What about that area where the large cement U-shaped? I don't know what they are, but they're like, they're huge. Do, do you know what I'm talking about that are out there along the river path?
Hmm, no, sir. Do you know, Ebert, which one Mr. Weeks is talking about?
Uh, yes, sir, I know exactly what he's talking about. There's a horseshoe running, uh, like a horseshoe, kinda like, uh, it's almost like a concrete bench. Right, Mr. Weeks? Correct me if I'm wrong?
Well, they're, they're, they could be like, yeah, but they're like, there's like forty of them and when they lay down, they're still like six feet tall and they're ten feet wide. They're, they're huge cement things. Are you, they're, they're, they're stored, they're not the, the circles where people can sit and rest. They're stored behind one of the building, one of the, uh, companies. Somebody has just left these out there, um, along the, the walking path.
Are they the concrete, uh, dividers and stuff that they use on the roadways?
There's, they're, they're U-shaped, though. They're, they're diff- they're, they're, I mean, when they're laying sideways, they're like six tall, so you could say they're six feet wide and they're, they're ten feet long. Boy, anyways, people started graffitiing those things. And with, with kind of hate speech and stuff like that, and I didn't know if that was Benton, if that was Anthony, if that was County. I don't know.
Well, what, what I can do is tomorrow, when first thing I get in, I'll drive the levee and then check it out and then we're all able, I'm able to immediately find out if it's, uh, the county ours or New Mexico. And then if it is, then I'll coordinate with, with Ebert, so we can do something about it.
And then, lastly, Chief, I read a deal here yesterday or today happening in Cruzus regarding a police officer, uh, um, and, and a chokehold used to subdue people. I wondered if you were aware of that and had any thoughts, or if there's, if this is something that the Anthony doesn't do to begin with?
Right, so, we actually don't do that. What we have is, we have the, the pressure point tactics and techniques that are, are trained in the academy. When I went, uh, in the, to the academy back in, uh, ninety-nine, two thousand, they, uh, one of the last techniques that we were using was a break heel stun. So, to describe it easier is if you've seen an MMA fight, whenever they do a high kick and they kick them and they hit them right here on the side of the neck, that's a break heel stun. and they kick them and they hit them right here on the side of the neck, that's a brachial stun. So that's one of the things that they outlawed a long, long time ago. So we're not using that brachial stun for the same reason because you, number one, you knock them out. Number two, you, you restrict the blood flow to the brain and then you can subsequently reduce the airflow uh going into the lungs. So we don't utilize that. We utilize the, the other basic common peroneal strife, et cetera, on the pressure point tactics and techniques. And we, we have adapted the spear technique. And this has, we have this in existence for several years now. We now are down to one certified instructor, which is Detective Kuharic. So he specializes in, in the spear technique and what it is, it's, it's um for the lack of better words, you, it, it's close uh combat, if you will, but it's you look at it and you think we're kind of horse playing, but it, it, it actually details like if somebody's coming to you instead of hitting them in the chest or whatever, you actually do a palm strike on their forehead. And believe it or not, i- i- it's more effective because you catch them off guard. One of the other techniques is pretty much on, on a backhand slap, if you will, on the chi- on the cheek. So those are some of the techniques that are used on the spear techniques, but we do not utilize the, the chokeholds whatsoever. Um, that is. Quite good.
Yeah, in other words, you don't, you don't do like real naked chokes, right?
No, sir. No, sir. We, we, we don't, we don't do that at all. As a matter of fact, um, the officers very uh seldomly have, you have had uh those use of force techniques uh imposed or, or utilized on anybody. The majority of the use of force uh incidences that we've had have been uh simple resisting arrest as far as uh pulling, pushing, and of course uh officers getting kicked. Uh, but never have they used re- uh rear choke uh hold techniques, anything having to do with obstructed uh airways. Even we have the um, the straps, uh what are they called doing the, the um, well, the straps that we can utilize to basically do a hog tie technique, but we don't do that. We have a policy in place that if the individuals are kicking the windows or the doors, we shackle them. We, we have that strap and we strap, strap it to the, to the rear of the shackles, the bottom of the shackles, and then we tie the, the, the strap through the door and then we secure it that way. Basically uh confining them just to the seat itself since we don't have the full harness on the seat. And we utilize the seat belts for compliance and we, we prevent them from kicking out. Uh, because again, studies have found that if you do that type of uh technique as far as hog tying, if you will, it can restrict the, the airflow to these individuals, especially if you put them in the back of the seat in a hot situation, the way we've had in these summers. And then uh in a hot car, limited air conditioner because we'll be honest, I mean, our air conditioner isn't the best because of the partition that is used to protect the officers. So there's very limited air conditioning going back there. Um, so we, we've, we have policy against these officers doing that. So like I said, we uh, we look at our use of force techniques and every use of force incident that we have, we do review it thoroughly with the officer and then we review video footage back to see if anything was done wrong. And if it was, we uh send the officer for training. We do whatever documentation needs to be done. But as of now, we have not had any of the, any of those incidences or any of those techniques that have been utilized.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions, comments?
Thanks, Chief.
Moving on to uh water and sewer, Mr. Hockes.
Like you, you said earlier, sir, uh, we start tomorrow, uh, cubic water, Mr. Menybiolos is gonna start uh actually laying on the pipe on the, from six feet of poplar. And we're gonna target, see if we can get all the way to Kel- uh Kelwood. But if not, uh, I mean, we're gonna stop at a portage for now. And uh we're gonna give uh plenty of time to notify the customers where it's gonna be affected. We're gonna be working on a day and then actually gonna, when we do the transaction from one pipe to the other one, we actually, we're actually gonna do it at night. I uh, I mean, coordinated with Mr. Papa, Mr. Vialobos and uh do that at night so we can minimize the impact on the residents. And um also now on well number two, since it was, we was out from 2012, we actually broke ground and uh last week on Friday, we started drilling. We drilled a, a 40-foot uh test hole and actually it's gonna be, I'm pretty excited about it and we haven't had a well for, for a long time. And uh on Wednesday, we're gonna have a Wednesday or Thursday this week, they're gonna continue drilling and from there on, I mean, we're gonna start drilling. Once we start drilling, we don't stop. It's 24 uh seven pretty much until we reach the 900 feet or goal. That's how the, the well's gonna be. Pretty exciting.
Pretty good, Everett. Um, also, uh, any questions or uh concerns uh that may be coordinated with Chief? Um, one of the things that I've been seeing and I've been hearing from a lot of the residents right there in the adjacent area or immediate area where the construction's taking place, we still constantly have trucks and traffic driving through that roadway at night. Um, once we start digging up the roadway and putting up the water line, uh Chief, if there's any way that we can get officers to cruise by there a little bit regularly and Everett, you know, about securing a little bit more barricades, that way these individuals don't go through our work site, cause unnecessary damage to themselves and more importantly, unnecessary damage to the lines that we're trying to put in. Do so, we are definitely gonna charge them and make them responsible for those damages. Um, but once again, uh, one of the things that we are looking at, ladies and gentlemen, is we did send out another arsenic letter notification, right, Mr. Hockes? Um, and I did actually get off the uh phone with uh Smith and Cooper. Um, and there, there's some either miscommunication or some issues that we're having with TCEQ. It's going back and forth. That is gonna be addressed by a formal letter from the town and also our engineers to TCEQ in regards to um those violations. Since in fact, and Everett, if you wanna explain a little bit, um, overall, our test samples are low, below uh the arsenic levels um that are allowable, but basically what's happening, Everett, is that they're averaging it for the year, for quarter.
Uh, yes, sir. The, how, how, how TCEQ does it? Every uh quarter of a year, we grab a sample from um different well sites, right? And they do uh, what they do, they, they do a continuous running average. And uh our MCA levels is zero point, is 0.01. You know, that's, that's, that's what they, they put it up to. So on the last, I'll say last October, when we had the main break, we had all these breaks. Actually, our wells pumped over 1 million gallons in less than 24 hours, actually less than 12 hours. So that, that was a significant draw, you know, drawdown from the wells and actually from the soils, you know, underneath. And we pulled more arsenic than we supposed to. That's, that's the reason why we're violation. After that, we're mixing our wa- our, our wells, we switch wells from well one to well two to try to blend the water. And actually, as you can see in the results, the last two quarters that we have had and you can see the results from the state, we have become lower than we usually are from the we in compliance with TCEQ. But the only, the only issue that we have right now, since we had that spike back in October, last fall, when they do the uh, when they do the average, that's actually what's hurting us. But as you can see the results, we are no longer with a, with high levels of arsenic in our water stream for the last two quarters that we took the samples. Uh, the, the, one of the sample was drawn, was grabbed in uh January and the other one's done on, on April. And they both came out lower than the average here.
And ideally, they were high, right, Everett? Because like they said, we had significant amount of water leaks in the fall and we were more reliant on one particular well, which is well number three, which is closer, I guess, to that high concentration of arsenic that they're having issues with on the New Mexico side a lot more regularly, correct?
Correct. That's exactly right, sir.
So by us also tapping in and for reassurance for the residents, by us tapping in and redoing this well number two, that's actually gonna help us more in the long run by reducing arsenic levels because we're gonna be having an additional well to pull water from, which will minimize the overall arsenic that is uh detectable uh in the overall water supply. And one of the things that I wanted to read real quick for everybody was from Mark Sanchez is in regards to the TCEQ arsenic issues. Um, just so everybody's known is that the town has changed its operations of the wells, which clearly has resulted in a decrease of the arsenic concentration. With the continued decrease, the town should be in compliance by October, November. And the public notice that has been issued by the town says that ideally the town is investigating the arsenic concentration at each well. And we are and will be changing the operation of its wells to decrease the arsenic concentration by blending. And our goal is to be in compliance within the 12 months as stated by TCEQ. They all have a co- copy of the notices and basically they know the plan of action that the town is taking. Now with the recent arsenic testing that the town has shown, it has shown that we are at the lower levels. So any resident or anybody looking uh to see that information, they're more likely or more than welcome to open and submit an open records request. And our girls will gladly uh provide them the copies of that documentation um if they are interested enough to look at the actual readings.
Or if I may, Mayor, also they can just look at their letter and they can actually go on the TCEQ website. They can actually see the results from the state. So they can actually see our last two quarters were actually below.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to courts, Mr. Palomares, anything to add, sir?
Mayor, Council, no, Mayor, other than, I mean, you all did get your uh report from Sally. Uh, I see that she sent out an email on June the 5th. Um, it looks like she may not have sent it to, to all council, but I know she sent it to, to uh Val, to Valerie and to Norma. But on this uh monthly report, uh for, it's for May, the revenue that was generated for the month of May was $33,309.39. There were traffic cases, were 242 traffic cases that were filed. And then non-traffic cases or non-traffic misdemeanors, 68 state law non-traffic misdemeanors and 13 city ordinance non-traffic misdemeanors. Um, other than that, other than that, Mayor, just that they're handling courts now every Wednesday as opposed to before when it was usually on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Courts are now every uh Wednesday, there's courts that are scheduled uh for the coming month, uh this month of June. Uh, on June the 10th, June the 17th and June the 24th. And uh they only have um to report the same as before. Mayor and Council, that I mean, the, the uh, the court hearings via Zoom have been going well. You know, the probably officers are like it, uh, you know, the attorneys, the defense attorneys like it. Uh, I, I like it. The, the staff is doing great with it. So that's all I have to report on that. Mayor, and I, I want to apologize that I had my video off earlier. I didn't realize that I had it off until we got to the uh, to the report section. So I'm still trying to get a hang on, on this uh Microsoft Teams. I'm used to doing Zoom a lot more. So I didn't realize I had my video off all this time. My apologies.
Alrighty, um, that's it for courts. Moving on to finance. Um, Mr. Weeks, anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, Ben, we were gonna meet tomorrow. I was gonna see if we could do a conference call instead because I had a couple of things kind of pop up and I make it hard to get from my office back and forth. But maybe, you know, you just pick the time tomorrow and I can do a conference call.
Yeah, we'll set up at noon to go over those uh line items and that uh, the budget that we were talking about. Um, and that's it. Uh, we are gonna be meeting with David, Norma and Val, uh and Sean as well. Um, since we are getting ready to start putting together the budget for this coming year, um, we have had some things that we're looking at, I guess restructuring, Sean, would you say, uh, with the overall budget?
Yeah, that's a good.
Yeah, that we're gonna look at doing. Um, because ideally, we sat down and talked to the auditors and overall, everything's looking good. You know, the accounts and everything, the way we have things set up. But you know, for a little bit more transparency purposes, we're gonna look at restructuring the uh, the, the, I guess, the budgets and the proposed budgets uh more so we can show a little bit more detail in regards to our capital improvement projects uh or capital improvement uh account. And then also uh the interest in sinking and the debt service and everything like that. So um, other than that, that's all that we have to report at this moment in time. Um, and that's pretty much it.
That's right.
Administration, uh, anything that any council would like to add? We went ahead and talked about the uh food distribution. We talked about well two, we talked about the street projects. Um, other than that, Everett's gonna be setting up the uh dispensary bags for the uh dog feces and stuff. A wildcat coming up soon as those come in. So other than that, it's same old stuff. We'll get things going. And our next uh regular council meeting is scheduled at 6:30 P.M. on Monday, June 22nd. Uh, do I have a motion uh to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilman Chavez. Do I have a second?
Second.
If you guys wanna stay here, we'll stay. Uh, Councilman Weeks, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:20. Thank you, everybody, for following along and joining. You all have a good evening, okay?
Good evening, everybody.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Night.